Good evening. We welcome you here to our City Council meeting. We'll begin our business. My first opportunity at sharing a regular City Council meeting. Maybe I'll get a little better on this one. Could we add the other? I recognize that all members of the City Council are here. And so we have everyone in attendance. We will begin with our opening ceremony. Um, who will take care of that?
Take your way, I appreciate it very much. Uh, I invite all of you to stand up and do a place of legend with me, please.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Special recognition next on our agenda. I don't know if there are any particular groups here. I don't see any. Okay. Am I missing any? If not, then I'll move right on to approval of the minutes to the council then.
Mayor, move for approval of December 10th and December 17th, regular meeting minutes.
Motion is before us, so we approve the minutes by Councilman Vincent, second.
Second.
We have a second on the motion. Discussion to the motion. I'm sorry, this is, you'll see my method. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, back to the maker of the motion. You have the floor as the maker of the motion to have the final say. If you have nothing, we'll hold on.
I have nothing.
Then, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Comment period. We now turn to the public, and we have a couple of people who have signed up to make comments. And we would now go to that. Mr. Michael Bennett would like to take a few moments. If you'd come forward and, let's see. You state your name, and the tradition is address. Name and address, and then proceed with your comments.
Okay, my name is Mike Bennett. I live at 4480 South, 3600 West. What I was told in the last meeting that I was hearing, and this is where some of the details were actually discussed in what they were going to do with the property adjacent to me.
Okay. Clarification. The public comment is just for people to talk about. If you're going to speak to an item on the agenda, we will give you an opportunity just a little bit later in the meeting when we get to that item. And we, based upon our agenda, we can address that. Is it with one of the items on our agenda?
I don't know what your agenda is.
Which, which, which item are you referring to? We'll have...
Application B, June 2013.
Okay.
C, A, E, seven. Yeah, there it is. Yes, it is on there. E. So, thank you. What we will do when we get to that point on the agenda, we will have a public hearing and open it up to comments. So you'll have an opportunity then. Is that okay? And just make sure that you watch that, and we'll try and also keep track of that.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. Then we have John... Oh, I'm terrible at reading.
John Heckathorn.
Heckathorn.
3818 West, 4700 South. I believe I'm in the same situation with Michael.
Okay. Just make sure you watch the agenda, and when that comes up, we'll make sure that we give you an opportunity to...
Very good, thank you.
Okay. We also have on our agenda City Manager comments.
Sir, I had none this evening, thank you.
Thank you. City Council, any comments? It's on the agenda, so I'm gonna ask. All right. Now we go to public hearings. And we start with A, and I need to maybe do a little coaching here. For starting a public hearing, I don't need to do anything other than declare that for the reopening of the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Is that sufficient to start the public hearing?
It is, sir. Usually I'll make just a real quick introductory comment, just so everybody's aware of what the item is about.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that we have it open. And for the public, obviously, I'm a new mayor. I've never conducted City Council meetings, so I'm asking some questions as I go. So you'll be a little patient. Come back in a couple of weeks, and I'll do a lot better. So, with that, that's now before us. Mr. Pyle, would you please introduce this to us?
Thank you, sir, very much. So, yes, twice annually, we reopen our approved budget for changes that occur during the year. And these could include things such as grant awards, or it could be rollovers of projects that move from one year to the next, or, or other issues that weren't foreseen when the budget was originally approved. The council has before them a list of footnotes that are detailing that, and we are required, as we do that, to have a public hearing each year, or each time we do that, sir. Another note, just on a side, as an aside, we are going to move from doing this semi-annually, as I just mentioned, to quarterly, which just may be of interest to the public.
Thank you very much. Then back to the council for any comments, discussion. And next, we will, seeing none, I'll go to the public then. This is an opportunity for anyone here who is here for this public hearing to come forward and speak on this issue related to the budget. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Back to the committee for action or comment.
Mayor, I would move for approval of ordinance 1401.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Motion is yours, Councilman Ruston.
Yeah, after, yeah, just after reviewing the 40 items here, it seems like it, you know, they're all things that meet within the city's goals and, and regular business that's gone through this body. So, it's good that we officially insert them into this budget opening.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, as a practice and courtesy, so that you're aware, generally whoever makes the motion, I will return to at the end, since they are the owner of the motion for any final comments. That's a chance, if there's been discussion, for any further discussion by the councilperson who made the motion. So we return there, you can wave that.
Wave by any summary.
Okay. Then, the motion is before us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We now go to item 7B for hearing on number Z8213, filed by Life Church of the Assemblies of God. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. The applicant is asking for a zone change from R18 to C2. The property in question is surrounded by compatible uses to that C2 zoning request. They have future plans which are not solidified, at least as I understand at this point. But they do have generally a master plan sort of a concept that they would like to pursue. In pursuit of that, they would like to have this zone changed performance.
Thank you. To the council for questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to the public for any input on this particular application. Is there anyone here to speak on this?
John Heckathorn, 3818 West, 4700 South, representing Life Church. I don't have anything to add, but just appreciate you considering this request.
I take it that you're in favor.
I am in favor. I'd like to speak in favor of this resolution. That's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming. Now back to the council for action or discussion? Mr. Vincent, excuse me, Councilman Vincent.
Mayor, I think as we look at this piece of property, you know, it's a piece of property that borders Bangor Highway and Home Depot. And it's a piece of land that's sat-banket. And I think that this would be a great use for the property. And Pastor, your church has been a great community member and has supported a lot of the city functions for reach out and helping the community, and we appreciate that. So, I think this will be a great addition to the area, so much appreciated.
Thank you. Further discussion or action?
I guess, just as a point of order, we should probably close the public hearing once we're done hearing from it, just so our records have closure on input.
Do you need to close it before the vote?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification then. And it doesn't require a motion or vote. We will close the public hearing then on this item, Z82013. And back to the committee. Thank you for that clarification direction. To the committee.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Councilman Vincent?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance, what are we at?
14-13. Z82013.
Z82013.
Thank you. The motion is before us. Is there a second?
Second.
It's actually ordinance 1402.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm using the wrong one. We go by the 1402. Okay, thank you again. So the motion is that we approve ordinance number 1402.
That's correct.
And the second to that, so that we clarify it, would you make the second?
Second.
Yes. Since I misstated it, we want to make sure it's before us properly. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, back to the maker of the motion.
No amendments, no changes, sir.
Thank you. Then we will place the motion for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We will now go to... And do I introduce it by ordinance number then, or by application number?
Either would be fine, sir, but the ordinance number may be more clear to the applicants.
Okay.
Okay, I understand correctly, sir. The recorder would prefer we do by application.
But when we make the motion, we do it by...
You approve the ordinance, that's right.
I approve the ordinance, okay, thank you. Very good clarification for me. Then we have before us application number ZT82013. An ordinance text amendment. Mr. Pyle, if you'll introduce that.
Thank you, sir. This amendment is really proposed for the purpose of ensuring that the streetscape project that was implemented and constructed during the 3500 south widening of a few years ago is protected and can continue as development changes occur along that street. And that would be between 2700 West and Bangor Highway.
Thank you. Clarification. I need to open the public hearing. And is this the appropriate point to do that?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, we will open the public hearing on this application. Anyone here to speak to this particular item? Seeing none from the public, then we will close the public hearing. And we will come back to the committee for further discussion or action.
I would move for approval of ordinance 1303.
Second? And we have a second for a motion to approve ordinance number 1403. Do you have any comments you want to make?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any discussion from the committee? Then back to the maker of the motion, it's yours, if you have any parting words.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll place the motion for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance number 14-03, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Now we go to application number Z72013. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dan Northrup has requested a zone change from agricultural or A1 to R18, single-family home residential. The address to this application is for property 0.82 acres, to be exact, at 5200 West and 3500 South. The zone change would enable a subdivision to create, well, two homes to be created. Both of these lots would be over 15,000 square feet.
Thank you. Further discussion in the council or questions? Seeing none, then we'll open the public hearing portion on this application, Z72013. Anyone here in the public who has come to speak or comment on this issue? As you know, I don't give you a long time, so please pay attention. You don't want to miss your opportunity. Okay, seeing none, then we'll come back here. We will now officially close the public hearing portion. And to the committee for action or discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of ordinance 14-04.
Motion before us. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
You have a second. Councilman Ruston, any comments?
You know, was, was actually able to visit the site the other day, and so there's a good chunk of property there, and there's existing building, but lots of good opportunities to be a good addition to our city. And so, excited to move forward by voting in the affirmative on this ordinance.
Thank you. If I may, I just need to clarify with staff, on this, there are two action items. Do we hold a public, a separate public hearing?
No, sir. As soon as the ordinance is acted upon, we can move directly to the resolution.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Then, discussion to the motion. Councilman Vincent?
Mayor, I have just one question for staff. I was just wondering if, if these lot sizes are the size that they are, is there any reason why this shouldn't be large lot zoning instead of the R18?
Mr. Pyle?
I believe the answer that probably has to do with the frontage on each of these lots. But if we would like further clarification, I can refer that to the staff.
Mr. Vincent, you, excuse me, Councilman Vincent?
That, that's good enough. I understand that, so.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
Just back to council.
We'll give you a chance.
Okay.
You have, you'll have the floor. Everybody sit. Okay. Further discussion or questions? Then we will go to the owner of the motion.
The only thing I was, in summary, was gonna just mention the Councilman Vincent's question, which was a good question and was why, you know, I went down to look. But there is actually existing two cutouts, you know, on the road. So it will be interesting when they flag it. You know, my, my thought was, are they gonna flag it right at 52 to where you can drive straight through, or to the next one? And I think either one would work, but I think go back to the lot size, so, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. With that, then, we'll place the motion for vote. All in favor of approving ordinance number 1404, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. And because that passed unanimously, we'll continue on this. And I don't need to open anything. We just move right on to further discussion or action.
Mayor, I'll move for approval, resolution number 1401.
We have a motion before us to approve resolution 1401. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Then, Councilman Vincent, any comments?
No comments, sir.
Okay, to the committee, to the council, excuse me. Sorry, I will get these down. To the council, any discussion or comments? Seeing none, back to Councilman Vincent. It's your motion, any final words?
No, sir.
Thank you. Then we will place the motion for vote. All in favor of approving resolution number 14-01, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. On a personal note, I knew there was a reason tonight, why I needed paper and pen to keep track of this. We now move to item E, 7E. Application number Z-9-2013, filed by Moore Homes. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. This is another zone change request by Mr. Randy Moore of Moore Homes LLC at 4410 and 4438 South, 3600 West. The application involves land covering four acres and would involve, I believe there's 11 lots, if I'm correct at this point, in the discussion. And this also has a resolution attached to it, sir, as well, a development agreement that would be approved.
Okay, thank you. That concludes your introduction?
Yes.
Then to the committee for questions or comments? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing portion of the meeting. This is a chance for the public to comment on this. Okay. First, Mr. Bennett? Now is your opportunity. And thank you for working with us. Now you have your chance to speak.
Thank you.
However, for the record, would you state your name and your address so that we fulfill all the requirements?
My name is Mike Bennett. I have a 4480 South, 3600 West. Originally, when they started to develop this property, there was a developer that was going to develop the three properties to the north of me and some of the properties in the back. And they were, they wanted to remain agricultural. I was pretty excited at the time to actually get those properties developed because they weren't occupied. They asked for a variance. Here, again, I really wanted to get the properties occupied and not really familiar with, you know, how, how this proceeding went. So, I didn't attend that meeting. As, as, as the development went along, I guess that developer stopped, only developed the three properties and pulled whatever it was that he had in place and gave it back, or sold the properties back to the moldings. And more homes come along, and they want to develop the properties with, instead of having agricultural property that bordered my rear property, he wanted to make it, zone it differently. With agricultural property, I didn't have the concern because I have irrigation in the back and figured that they may be irrigating. They may have some kind of more of an animal use than just a residential property. So right now, there's an, there's an irrigation ditch that goes in the back of the property. And my concern is my water runoff. This is the meeting that I was told that I needed to maybe go and ask for some details or get some comments on it. There's, I don't know of any plans or, or how that proposed, that proposal is supposed to stop right there. I'm not the end of the ditch. In the past, when I would irrigate, I'd pull my gates, and that waste runoff would go into that field and used to irrigate that entire acreage. Now, that's not, that's not there now. So what I wanted to do was, I wanted to propose that they put some type of city drain, or Mr. Moore actually put a city drain at the end of my property because I'm liable for that water when I irrigate. I'm liable for the runoff water. So either that or an easement for that water. So that was, that was one of my first concerns, was, was my irrigation. He approached me, wanted to buy my irrigation from me. I told him I needed to irrigate my property to keep it in the way that I had in the past. So that was one of my first concerns. My second concern was knowing that I'm not gonna have agricultural neighbors. I'm gonna have residential neighbors. I've had some residential neighbors in the properties next to me for a long time. He would rent those properties out. And I'd have a lot of little kids. I own, or my wife owns miniature horses there. And they'd feed them and do different things with them. If they had agricultural neighbors, then they're gonna bring those children up, or those people are gonna be like mine. And not necessarily, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd have as big a concern with my neighbors being agricultural folks rather than residential. If kids or people or things stick their fingers in there, they could, you know, they could get their fingers bit. I just got a lot more concerned about liability with my horses there than I had in the past. So what I wanted to do, know there, and I'd been told in the past that I'd have fencing, there'd be fencing, there'd be something substantial there to help thwart that. And right now, with, with the properties that they've developed right to the north of me right now, I was told that there's gonna be fences there. And if you drive along there, there's no fences. He's about, almost concluded, first contractor, almost concluded his construction of those properties. And there's not a fence between us. He went around the backside of the, of the two middles, and there's no fences on the outside of that. And if you drive up and down 36, you can see wherever they developed those properties, there's fencing all the way around that. So, you know, firsthand, I just needed to know about fences for the original construction that was there, because that's what I was told. And I don't know who enforces that, or how that's enforced. And then on the second part of the fencing in the back, I wanted to know what type of fencing, or how I need to make sure that no harms will come to my animals.
So this I turn to Mr. Pyle. Is there anyone who has any information on that?
Yes, thank you, sir. So, it sounds to me, if I can sort of summarize, we've got basically three questions, or two questions, with one that's kind of a two-part question.
Yes, sir.
What I'd like to do, sir, if I could, is get Jake to drop the screens and bring up a map, so we can possibly a little bit clearer on what property is we're talking about. And if I may, turn over some time to either Ms. Cottle, or I know that Mr. Pastrick is here as well, and have them possibly give some input on what's happening or what could potentially happen with the water runoff issue. And then also, they may have some information on the fences.
That would be perfectly fine.
Okay.
Who do you want to come up? Well, should we wait until after to get this up?
Yeah, I'll have them come up as, as we're bringing up the slide.
Sir? We have a similar issue with the water, too, so we will...
For the public portion, we will have opportunity for others to speak. And so when we conclude at this one, you'll be allowed to have your say. Okay. Where are we, almost?
Sir. And something else we may be able to do as well. I'm not sure if Steve has the information on the fencing or not, do you? Okay. Maybe we can have him answer that question first while we're bringing up the map, which might help the, the water.
That would be fine, if you would come forward and...
So, the property...
Again, I'm gonna go back to an old procedure, because other people may be watching this. Would you state your name and your department?
Sure. Steve Pastrick, CD Department. For fencing, there are three properties right along 3600 West that Mr. Corian Angel recently redeveloped. And as part of his agreement to reason those properties last year, he agreed to put in some perimeter fencing. So for those homes that face 3600, they'll have perimeter vinyl fencing. And then the ordinance does require between any residential development and then agricultural property, that there be at least a chain link fence between the two pieces.
Could I clarify, did that answer your question on that? On the panel?
Not necessarily, because that fence is not there yet. He's got the fences all the way around the backside and to the middles. But what I was led to understand was, it would be surrounding that, and that means it's the fence between my property and the new construction. And there's nothing there.
Sir, I'd also have a further question as well. And Mr. Moore, if we want to have him come, could, may have some further information on this as well. But to Steve's explanation that at least chain link fence... that at least chain link fencing would be required on that, I was wondering, is that the standard that's been agreed upon? Or will it be vinyl, vinyl? Or do we know? Or does Randy, Mr. Moore have further information on that?
So just, again, there's the three homes right on thirty-six hundred. The agreement there was vinyl, but it's just around those homes for the, as you go further west between the subject property and then the piece to the south. It's just the ordinance that requires chain link. And there's no commitment for anything other than chain link at this point.
Okay.
Please come up to the microphone.
I'm sorry. And that's on the first developer with the first property, not necessarily what may or may not occur in the back of my property. So that's, that was the one that I was speaking to, a third, a third issue.
Oh, I got you.
So, because it hasn't happened. So I've got some misgivings about, you know, the new contractor and new construction and the changes that have been agreed to.
Okay. Where I am unclear, and we really are going to need the map for this, is I don't have in my mind where any of the lots are or where the, your property is, for example. So we'll need to get that brought up here. Which I see Jake is working on very diligently, and we may be almost there.
Council members, you have these in your documentation so you can see what they're talking about as well.
It looks like we had to restart the computer for some reason, but I think we may be...
Yeah, this, we had this division with Mr. Moore's issue.
Oh, okay.
It was the existing developer.
Which we also observed, I just may, we may not be able to answer that one if Mr. Moore doesn't have any information or we don't know, or if we don't know. But if we don't know right now, we'll definitely get with you right into the meeting and see what we got to do to figure out where the responsibility and timing issue is.
I'm sorry. And with the, with the fencing, the way that it was, when they were going to, when the first contractor was going to put agricultural property back there, the chain link fence would have been fine with me. But it's going to be residential now. And I've got so many more concerns about fingers and animals and other animals into my property and stuff like that. But I believe that it should be a lot more substantial than that. The vinyl fence will break. And, you know, I'm thinking more of a brick wall or something that's a lot more substantial than, you know, something else.
I apologize for the slowness of this here. I'm not sure what exactly happened before as we were trying to bring it up.
If I could ask a clarification, your property runs from, is on thirty, what, thirty-six hundred West and runs along the south side of what's happening there?
Yes.
Okay. We have figured that out on ours on the computers, but you can't see it, so.
We can put one of our iPads up, Jake.
Yeah, we can use our, I mean, I've got exactly the slide what we, we would need to be looking at here. But for whatever reason, we can't seem to get it up there. I also was thinking I could maybe have Mr. Pastrick come up with a gentleman and just sort of illustrate it for you. But then we're not, you're not all going to be able to see from a council standpoint. Look, so maybe we're almost here. If I was a joke telling man, I'd tell you a couple of jokes till we got here, but I just don't.
That Mayor Linder would have been filling in right now.
Windows ninety-eight joke or something.
Oh, you don't want to hear accounting humor.
Uh, Jake, what we're going to want to see probably is the third one from the bottom that has the subdivision lot layout. Third, is it the last one?
Well, that's, the last one is like the, it's the, it's a whole ball now. Aerial views.
Oh, yeah, you can...
So I, well, that would have worked.
That one. That's the one I'm looking for.
So where, the property here is on the right-hand side of, of where those lots are at the end of the cul-de-sac. And it goes out, thirty-six hundred is at the top of the screen.
Here, Steve. We'll hand that off for indication.
Okay, so, so north is to the left. Mr. Corey Angel owns these three lots here. And when he came in to redevelop or to rezone the property and committed to improve those properties, he agreed to put up a vinyl, perimeter vinyl fencing around each of those lots, around the sides and the back. So essentially from here is what, in his development agreement, is the commitment to do vinyl fencing. And that's a, it's a work in progress. He's still working on remodeling those homes. And so that'll be done as part of the reconstruction there. And then the, the balance here, from here to the west, again, the minimum requirement is a chain link fence.
And where's Mr. Bump Bennett's property then? Is it directly adjacent to those two lots?
It's the whole, the whole length.
Okay.
Okay, and my, my horses actually start right about in here. So I've got stalls. I have a garage, a two-car garage that sits approximately here. And then my stalls for my, for the boys are right about in here. And then about right in here, this is pasture. Have a large pasture back here. And it's for turnout and growing, growing grass and whatever else that I do there. So I've actually, I've actually got some, some of the male horses that are actually boarded right in this area. So that, that was the only thing. And my concern here wasn't necessarily against Mr. Angel. It's just what's happening now. And my concern with not being able to protect that. In the past, with the neighbors that I had in this location right here, when he was renting this out, had little kids and they were feeding apples and, you know, always maybe getting nipped and, you know, just huge concerns with that and all that I've got. The irrigation that I've got runs approximately, and you can't see it. My property just goes straight this way. And then these, these folks here own the, own the first property next to the ditch. So we have, we have an irrigation line that goes all the way up into here. And right now, the way that it was is when I pulled my ditch, or my, my, my gates on my ditch, that just, that waste irrigation that just run off into this property. And Dutton actually used to irrigate the lawn on this one in four hours. He used to be able to irrigate this entire property. With not knowing what's ahead of you on that irrigation ditch, you don't know just exactly how much water you can get at a time. And it's a huge liability. Since I've lived there, Dutton's actually flooded me twice. And it's just a nightmare. It's just a horrible thing without some, some other kind of protective measures there in place. And I would not like to have any damage to these guys here with the irrigation. These guys run the same risk. So...
Okay, thank you, sir. So I think we finally understand what the issue is. Now, maybe we'll be able to have discussion, recommendation. Maybe we'll hear some more from the proposed developer as to what solutions are maybe. I would like to ask, sir, if we could, one last comment for Mr. Pastrick, who may have some information on how we are proposing to handle the irrigation question.
Thank you again, Steve Pastrick. So Mr. Moore does have some more detail. I'm sure he can share on this. But just a little about our procedure when it comes to a zone change and then subsequently a subdivision. At this stage, we're looking at more broader land use issues like what is the lot size proposed here appropriate, density considerations. If the council approves the zone change, the next step for the developer would be to submit a subdivision plat, which is the point at which we look at topography and grading the drainage and the road design. So the engineering has not been done yet at this point. And so at the point at which the zoning is, or assuming the zoning is approved, that all of those details will be resolved. So it's, it's fairly common to have irrigation issues come up. And again, we, we address all of those as part of the subdivision review.
Thank you, Steve.
Sir, can I ask a question, Mr. Pastrick?
Certainly, Councilman.
So, Mr. Pastrick, on the two homes that would be adjacent to the agriculture, would there be an attachment to those deeds that they have agriculture and thus they know they have the smells and the different things that come with agriculture?
So there's actually a note on the subdivision plat that, so essentially, all the lots that are in that subdivision will have that note that says that they're adjacent to agricultural property and, and just put them on notice of that.
Thank you. Further comments from the committee? Or, excuse me, we're in a public hearing. Sorry. We're in a public hearing. I'm getting slowly. Then there were some others who had comments who wanted to say in the paper.
Just, I'll try to be quick.
Your name?
Doug Eldridge. I'm actually a resident of Murray, but I grew up in this area. And I'm speaking for my brother who couldn't be here tonight, but my nephews are here. Talking about the two lots south of Mr. Bennett. On the corner of forty-four hundred and thirty-sixth, there's an old pioneer home, about eighteen sixty. And that's my grandfather's home. And he used to own all of this property, clear up to the canal and south of it a little bit. And it ended up being divided between three of his sons and his daughter. Martha Moulton is my aunt. The Moultons are our relatives. And we're pleased they're developing a property. Our only concern is about that irrigation ditch that runs along the whole west side of the property. I suspect that's been there for over a hundred years. My grandfather's, he's dividing this up between my two uncles and my dad and my aunt. That ditch goes straight to the canal, runs straight north, and irrigated all of that property. Of course, as my family irrigates their lots to the south of this, you try to contain all the water on your property. But there is some spillage. And there are always issues if a head gate breaks or something. And then there's issues about liabilities because it's going to flow into the new development. So a reasonable proposal would be just to make sure that ditch is not covered over and that perhaps a culvert or something could be put in and divert it into the wastewater that runs off of forty-four hundred and thirty-six hundred West. And that would alleviate a lot of potential problems. And I don't think it'd be that expensive. Anyway, we're just concerned about our ability to irrigate our property. We have some gardens and things like that. We have water rights and shares. And we can even use them to water the lawns. And we like to be able to maintain our ability to do that, especially given that's been there for like a hundred years. As part of the development, we'd just like to make sure that that's not done away with or covered over. That's all I have to say. You have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome to come forward. Ideally, name and address.
Forty-five oh two South, thirty-six hundred West, Fred Eldridge. One, one last concern on that, and I don't know if it is aware of that, but Mr. Bennett also referenced that as well, that he's been flooded twice. When those fields are irrigated, they tend to raise the water table a little bit. The houses, the two houses that are closest to the Bennetts may have issues if they have basements, especially if they're very close to the, the south side of the property. So just kind of a note to make that that's a possibility. One has to be careful of those things. But as the land gets watered, the water table rises as well. Usually not a problem, but, but I don't know. It's a new, it's a new development, so, yeah. A concern. And I echo the concern also about the, about that with water runoff. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Mayor, most of, Mayor, most of these people know me, but it's Mike Markham, three zero zero eight, Alice Circle. I like to refer to some of the water issues that's come up because I was in, had the same problems when I bought my home from the, the property that was owned by the Mackey Dairy Family. And we had an irrigation ditch in our backyard. It was completely fenced on both sides, but it was my requirement to maintain that ditch and keep it clean. But they didn't like me just to kind of flare through there and burn the grass out. So I had to get permission from them at my expense to pipe that, pipe that ditch. As these developments grow in these areas where you're going to have irrigation ditches, it's becoming a, a bigger and bigger problem. As far as a homeowner, I didn't think I should have to pipe that ditch at my expense. And I had to get a letter from him. I had to use his size of pipe. All kinds of issues that you have to deal with. My son lives up in the Mill Creek area, and he has an irrigation ditch running through his backyard that they have a very difficult time controlling. So I think as we all talk about different irrigation issues, as it goes on in these houses and these new neighborhoods that's growing, there needs to be a lot of attention paid to where that water's going. Because the one gentleman mentioned when he irrigated what water he didn't use, which just flowed out into the fields, that is referred to as the tailwater. And there has to be a way for that to leave his property safely. And the ditch that I had for a while, some people stepped in, closed the ditch. Ruel and Mackey brought water down the ditch and it flooded his farm. Subsequently, when they did a rebuild on forty-one hundred South, they, they, yeah, forty-one hundred South, they connected that ditch to a drain pipe that then in turn drains into the canal that's just about at the corner of twenty-seven hundred West and forty-one hundred South. But it's my understanding that the people that have the water rights, once it leaves the canal, is responsible for maintenance of that ditch. And that is indeed with probably plights knowing those people that the major water returns in the state. So something to think about.
Thank you. Any further comments? Yes.
Randy Moore, ninety-six ninety-one, Granite Woods Circle. Mayor Bigelow, welcome, council members. Very excited to bring this application to you. I can address, hopefully address all of these issues and concerns. As Mr. Pastrick said, normally at this stage, this is zoning. There'll be a subdivision application to address the other issues. But we're well ahead of that in this particular development. I have our plans and, and our design is pretty much complete at this point, assuming and hopefully we, in gaining approval tonight, then we would start our subdivision application tomorrow. But as far as the three or four issues that I wanted to talk about, as far as the irrigation, and hopefully I can, this is a complicated pointer.
Center.
Center. Okay. Let me point it up so we don't get any, okay. Perfect. Don't want to do any damage. So the, Mr. Bennett is, is here, adjacent to, on the south side of the property. And then I think it's Eldridge.
Yeah.
Eldridge is a little further over. Maybe if you could bring up the aerial, it may help a little bit. There, there are those two or three parcels that are there, which are probably two or three, couple of acres, I would say, combined. So there's not a, and much of it's covered with homes and, and that. So there's not a lot of area that's irrigated. of area that's irrigated. There we go. So, the water comes in right now, here's the canal. It comes in, they irrigate the back of their properties here. Now, I'm sorry, if you go back to the subdivision plat, our design at this point in working with our engineer is we are going, if there's tailwater and there's water users, we need to provide a tailwater pipe. There's no question about that. And so, our plan at this point is to bring the, we will, we anticipate bringing a pipe from 3600 West, which will come down. This plat, I can explain this in a minute, our plat has actually changed slightly from this conceptual, but we'll pipe it from, anticipate piping here from 3600 down over into the back here. And as soon as this meeting's over, we can meet and I can show you these designs and we can discuss that. But we'll pick up the tailwater here, which will go into a 15 inches, the minimum pipe size that the city requires, which should be more than adequate for what that land area is. So, we anticipate the tailwater. As water users, they'll need to control it. There's a weir right on the canal. They do need to control, be in control of the water, but we will provide the tailwater pipe. As far as fencing, the city requires on agricultural properties, anything adjacent to agricultural uses, the city requires a six-foot chain link fence. We fully anticipate installing that. That'll be part of the subdivision approval, it'll be bonded and inspected and required by the city on the south side. The other properties here, we, I, we had nothing to do with those properties. That's something that need to be discussed with the city. So, we anticipate fencing. This particular plat, as far as the plat and the zoning, we looked at an R-18 zoning, and actually, in an R-18 zoning, it will lay out with 12 lots. In looking at the lots, as we originally did the conceptual, these two lots, the buildable area, I was not very happy with it. I had some concerns. And this particular property, the Moultons are going to retain this piece, which will be a large lot. There's an existing home on the corner, and the Moultons are going to retain this parcel at this point. But if you go from here, the width of the property, and you divide that, the lots that we have are somewhat shallow. And so, in looking at the buildable area, I made the decision to eliminate a lot. So, we, the proposal that we have at this point is 11 lots. If you average the 11 lots, they're about 9,500 square feet in average. And then if you even take the large lot that the Moultons retain, in average, that'd be much higher. But we've eliminated a lot, we've gone from 12 to 11, and they will average at 9,500 square feet. We've also proposed a development agreement that exceeds what the city requirements are. And so, we would welcome your approval and any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? And I know we're getting a little off track here, but you start talking irrigation here, and my ears perk up. But with this plan, are you planning on putting it into the stormwater system?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, there's a existing, a large existing city stormwater pipe in 3600.
And there's nobody down, I guess, down ditch that has water rights that?
No.
That need be?
The only users would be these two. And like I say, it comes right out of the canal, so it's actually, we've done many developments with irrigation. As far as groundwater, there was a question as far as groundwater. We've already done the soils test. We're down about 10 feet, we, there was no water. We had no water table in that particular area, which was very welcome. So, I don't anticipate concerns as far as groundwater.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Further. Now, let's see. Remind me on public hearing, can we go back to people again a second time?
As long as the public hearing is open, sir. That's right, you can, anybody can come and address.
But my understanding was you have to let everyone speak once first.
I'm not sure if that's an actual rule. I know that has been practiced, but.
If it isn't a rule, we'll continue the practice.
Right, we'll.
Okay. Anyone want to, is there any further discussion on this? Okay. Apparently, that is all of the public discussion, so we will close the public hearing portion on this agenda item and come back to the committee for discussion, comments, action. Councilman Bueller?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions of staff.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to make sure that this is clear in my mind. Tonight, we have before us a zoning ordinance. We change the ordinance, it's not a plat approval. We would then be looking at a plat, and I suppose hypothetically, we could change the ordinance, and then upon examination of the drainage and every other condition, never find a plat that would be recommended or approved hypothetically. Is that accurate?
Hypothetically, that is true.
So, we're not to that part, yeah? And that will be reviewed?
Correct.
And when that plat comes up, would it entail also a public hearing for any concerns with that?
Final plat will not include a public hearing. We also have the, if I remember correctly, subdivision approval as an intermediate step there. Is that a public hearing? I can't remember. Yeah, preliminary plat, yeah.
Okay, so the preliminary plat would include a public hearing, would make sure at that time that we've addressed all these concerns?
If it would be advantageous to the councilman's information request, or we could have Mr. Pastrick come up and just walk through the whole process at both the planning commission and the council level, just so everybody out there is clear as to where their chance for input would be.
Would you like that, Councilman Bueller?
I think so.
Then yes, please come forward.
So, with the subdivision plat of this size, you could have a preliminary plat that goes first to planning commission. Once that's approved, the developer would come back with a final plat that would go to planning commission, and then the last step is to the final plat for city council approval.
Thank you. And I have the floor. And my comment then would be that I think that with this, what's before us tonight, we would have sufficient information to decide if we wanted to change the zoning from agricultural, knowing that the actual configuration of the concerns with the water would be still dealt with in the future. I do have another question. We have, if we approve the zoning, we then have a resolution which requires some upgrades in the housing, which we appreciate. Would it be possible to require a different or a sturdier type of fencing along there than what our ordinance requires?
Mr. Pyle, I believe that was directed to you.
Yes, sir. So, the development agreement approval under the resolution does as the councilman mentioned, have very specific requirements, and I believe as we do have a development agreement in front of you, and you wanted to make some minor modification to that, that would be possible.
Just to clarify, is that permissible to do now, are you saying?
Yes.
I think that would be when the resolution is, which is?
Yeah, I'm sorry. When that actual resolution's being considered.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Further discussion?
To follow up on Councilman Bueller's point, it's probably the appropriate time to do it now, as opposed to in a final plat approval, to where that's just where we as a city council are just checking to make sure that they've lived up to every obligation that we've set them through and not put them on new tasks or new requirements.
Further discussion? Oh, okay. Was there, now, I didn't close the public hearing portion because we were kind of commenting, but any further discussion? If not, I'm going to, okay, we do have one more comment. Thank you.
Randy Moore again. I'd like to address the issue of the fencing. I'm curious what your thoughts are. I've done many developments in the city. We've been adjacent to agricultural property. The city requirement, the city code is chain link fencing. I appreciate the neighbors' concerns, but, you know, to have a neighbor or someone come and say, oh, I want a block wall, or I want a concrete wall, or I want a vinyl fence, or I want something different, goes against what those requirements are. And I appreciate the concerns, but the six-foot chain link fence is there for a reason in terms of agricultural zoning, and that's what we've done in many areas. Adjacent to Hunter Village Development, we have agricultural property and horses that are adjacent to that. We installed a lot of chain link fencing that's still there and functioning very well. And so, I'd just like to address any concerns or questions regarding that. Our anticipate installing the six-foot chain link fence, that's what the requirement is. Vinyl, many times when you deal with agricultural zoning or horses, I don't own horses, I'm not a horse person, I don't know, but I hear that they kick vinyl, they break vinyl. That's why the chain link is there. So, my, what I would state is that the six-foot chain link fence would be installed if there are further concerns, I think, with neighbors or something, that the two residents, the two lots that would border there could make decisions later whether they want to install a different type of fencing.
Thank you. Here's, we have some comments or questions, Councilman Vincent.
Yeah, just a question for Mr. Moore. I, I know that there are different, with chain link fence, you can get some smaller openings. And I don't know if that's, I know it's probably a little bit added cost, but I'm wondering if we just required a smaller gauge opening in the chain link fence.
I'd be open to looking at that if there's heavier fence, or anyone knows, anybody horse people? Councilmember Lang?
Can you finish, Councilman?
Just, it was more of a question to the developer that probably installs a lot more fences than I do, but I know I have seen chain link fence with a very small gauge opening that's, normally, they're like two inches by two inches, the opening, and I've seen them that were about, you know, half of that, so.
I'd be happy to look at that. If there's a different type of chain link fence that's more appropriate for?
I can understand not one kid's fingers to get through there, but I wouldn't expect a full expense of what you're, of solid fencing. And part of the other reason here is the people who would build those two homes on that back of that property, and they're likely to install their own fencing, I would think, so.
You can't say for sure what's going to happen, but if I was to guess, I would say that residents would probably look at doing vinyl fencing or some other type of fencing later that would be away from that chain link. That's typically what happens, but there's no guarantee to that.
Councilman Lang?
So, my question was, well, my idea was to add the slats to the chain link fence, thus making fingers less likely to go through. And would that be a compromise that would be added to the?
I'd be open to looking at that.
Because I see a, I mean, a vinyl fence not stopping a horse from?
If the concerns like fingers or something, yes. Now, I'd be, I'd be open to looking at slats if you, if they're available, certainly.
Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, one more comment. And my experience with fences is that they have two sides. And sometimes, the landowners on each side will agree what to do with that fence, and sometimes we have two fences on a property line, which isn't anything that I would prefer, but I don't think that we need to really address or act on that issue tonight. I think that, you know, we have an ordinance, and to require something greater than the ordinance is probably beyond what I would be comfortable doing. However, Mr. Moore, I do appreciate your comments, if you would look at a smaller gauge or slats in the fencing, because I think that would certainly be appropriate and mitigate the concerns of liability, which are real concern and which I do value as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilman Lang?
Sorry. May I ask a question of Mr. Pastrick again?
Certainly.
So, when they developed the three houses or were redoing them to the north, was there a reason, or what was reasoning of the vinyl fencing of those?
Actually, wasn't, in that case, a requirement from the city, Mr. Angel just proposed as part of his rezoning and fixing those up, he offered to the city to include that as part of the enhancements to those properties. So, he offered those, and those are included in the development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comment from the public? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing portion. Public hearing portion of this is closed. Then back to the council for final action discussion.
Mayor, I would move approval of ordinance 14-05.
Councilman Rushton has made a motion to approve ordinance 14-05.
Second?
There's a second. Discuss, back to the maker of the motion.
I think that, you know, looking at the area, the existing neighborhood, everything, and as the city continues to grow, that this zoning fits the general plan and is in harmony with the goals that we're trying to do at the city, so it's good to, you know, approve this and allow one step to be closer, and seeing these 11 houses being built.
Then to the council, any comments or discussion? Back to the maker of the motion, any final comments?
Wave any summary?
Then we'll place the motion before the council to approve ordinance number 14-05. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. For the council, if I hear no no votes, even if you haven't voted yes or no, the assumption will always be that no vote, or no voice means yes. Okay? Just so that's clear, that's how I interpret it. Okay. Then, we are, how quickly, I forgot, I don't need to go back to public hearing, but consider resolution 14-02 to the committee. Discussion to that resolution.
Mr. Mayor? I would move that we also approve the development agreement, which is resolution 14-02.
Motion is before us, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Councilman Rushton, comments?
Yeah, the development agreement is in harmony with other development agreements we have, it should be a nice, nice addition to the city. I think it's interesting because, and I guess Councilman Vincent was maybe the only one around to when the city council took up the issue of, or talked about taking up the issue of chain link fences in the city. And, you know, it's still on the books, and it might be something that maybe we look at at some other point, but right now, this development agreement looks good to me for approval.
To the council for discussion. Any comments? Seeing none, back to the maker of the motion, any final?
Wave any summaries?
Then we'll place the motion before you to approve resolution number 14-02. All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we move to item number eight, resolution 14-03. Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, sir. In what is in effect a one-item consent agenda, in other words, we would list this as a consent agenda, except for the fact that there was only one resolution. This is a resolution to accept a public sidewalk lighting and utility easement at 2851 South Redwood Road.
To the committee for discussion. On this type item, do we hold a public hearing as well?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then to the committee, any comments or discussion or action?
Mayor, move for approval of resolution 14-03?
Councilman Vincent has made a motion to approve this, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. The motion then is before us to approve fourteen, resolution 14-03. Councilman Vincent, any comments?
No, sir.
Any discussion from the committee? None, back to the maker of the motion.
No comment.
No comment. We'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 14-03, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We now go to item number nine on our business, 9A, elect a mayor pro temp for a four-year term. Now, there are several items to take place here. Before we do that, I think we deal with our current mayor pro temp. He has just a few more, like two, three, four minutes, but we would... And because I'm new at this, and so, I'll kind of stumble through it, but the intention is right. And that is that we want to certainly thank our current mayor pro temp as he ends his, was it his first term? And also, and because, I don't know how this is done, I assume that I take care of this. And so, officially, am I supposed to say it? Sure. But we want to keep in range of the microphone. We want to present to Councilman Rushton, who has served as our mayor pro temp for the last four years, thank him for his service, and recognize that with a very nice plaque that is presented to him on behalf of the council. So, thank you very much. And we will even give you a box to carry it home and keep it safe. Anything else we do in connection with that? I've probably been more brief than most, but certainly I do appreciate the efforts and work of those who are willing to serve. With that, with that then, we will now proceed with nominations for mayor pro temp, and this does not need a second. Councilman Beeler.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination. Councilman Corey Rushton has served well. He doesn't get much for his service, except a plaque at the end of the term, and he needs another one so that it can be bookends, and he can incorporate them into his home decor. And I would nominate Mr. Corey Rushton to serve a second term as mayor pro temp.
That motion is in order. The next item is that the nominee should speak to accepting or declining the position.
Mr. Beeler, thank you for the nomination and the vote of confidence. I guess if I speak, I can at least take 30 seconds here, but, you know, yesterday I was privileged to sit in the front row and hear all the newly elected officials, as well as some returning elected officials speak. And it was a good chance for me, even though I didn't participate, or, you know, just kind of sat and listened and soaked it in, that it was a good battery recharger for me. And your words that I heard yesterday were good for me to hear, to renew my commitment to the city that I love and serve it in any way that I'm able and that to do. And so, I would accept your nomination and would be, I'm excited to serve and continue to represent the city as mayor pro temp and bring in a razor blade in a few years and be able to change the dates on this one, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then back to the committee, any further nominations? Seeing none. Need a motion to close nominations, I think.
I move that we close the nominations.
Just to make sure, that's traditionally how it's done. So, we have a motion before us to close nominations, probably ought to take a second.
Second, the motion?
We have a second motion. All in favor of closing the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Now the nominations are ceased, we only have one candidate, so now we need a motion. We can do it by acclamation, what's the term?
Yeah, acclamation.
Rather than a regular vote, since we don't have to do anything else, let's do it by acclamation. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
The motion is that by acclamation, we declare our single candidate mayor pro temp. All in favor? Excuse me, we better have a second. I keep forgetting.
Well, second.
Second to the motion. Any further comments? If not, we'll immediately replace it for a vote.
Corey, Councilman Rushton's done a great job, and we appreciate his service, and I'm sure that, Mayor, you'll use him for a lot of ribbon cuttings, because he likes to do that.
And he might be surprised all the things he gets to do. Okay, with that then, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Corey Rushton is now our councilman. Corey Rushton is now our mayor pro temp for the next four-year term. Let's see, then 9B, appointment to council of government's executive board. Mr. Pyle, would you introduce?
Yes, sir. As, due to the size and the setup of the council of governments or COG, as it is informally known as, we have two positions that we are allowed to fill on that body. So, the council can appoint any two of the members. It is usual that mayors serve as one of those, but it doesn't have to be. So, from that, from that information, we would ask you to proceed, sir.
Okay, on appointments like this, how is that done? Is it similar to nominations? What is the procedure for doing that? If you wouldn't mind clarifying that for myself, David and Mr. Moore.
And this may be a spot where my memory is failing, but normally, what we've done in the past is, as we have outside entities and bodies that we do appoint these to, it's actually really sort of a rather informal appointment. We get basically by general agreement of the council for and or above to say, yep, so-and-so is interested and would be willing to serve in that. However, given the point that we do have this as a formal item on our agenda, I would recommend that we do it by nomination and vote.
Set okay with the council, then we'll proceed accordingly. We'll now open it for nominations.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, could we make a dual nomination?
I believe that would be in order unless we hear objection from the council. I'll accept that as a proper motion. Seeing no objections, the chair will rule that that is appropriate.
May I make a nomination, sir?
Yes, sir.
I would nominate Mayor Bigelow and Mayor Pro Temp Rushton to serve on the council of government.
Second?
We have a motion and a second before us. To maker of the motion, any comments?
I think that we need the services of both of these gentlemen, and that they are the appropriate gentlemen to serve at this time.
Okay. Then to, I guess probably as appropriate to confirm that both of those individuals would be willing to serve in that position. So, first, Councilman Rushton.
Yes, thank you.
And my response would be yes as well. So, discuss, any further discussion with the council? Seeing none. Yeah, I guess I, just to be safe, okay, I may be overly cautious. No, not maybe, I am overly cautious, and I would say that we should have now a motion that nominations cease? If there is such a motion?
Motion that the nominations cease.
Motion is that nominations cease, second?
Second.
We have a second. Well, with the council's permission, we will not discuss that. We would proceed immediately to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The council's determination is that motions, or nominations have ceased. So, do we need to... The motion now would be, what? To approve?
The nomination.
By acclamation?
By acclamation.
Well, I guess we do it by acclamation. That seems odd, since it's not an item. So, I look for a motion.
Motion to approve the two nominations by acclamation.
Yes. Move that by acclamation, the two nominees be appointed to COG, and there's a second?
Second.
We have a second. Unless there's discussion, we'll move immediately to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. That takes care of that item. Do we need a motion for an executive session? Mr. Pyle, anything from you?
Not for me, sir, no.
Okay. The council? Then is our work done for the evening? Then I'll entertain one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Non-debatable, we just vote it up or down, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed unanimously, we're adjourned.
Call to order, the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency meeting. Let be noted that we've had an opening ceremony, and all are present. We have approval of minutes for December 3rd and December 17th. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of December 3rd and the minutes of December 17th, 2013.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion to those minutes that need to be brought up at this time? Mr. Beeler, the motion was yours.
I'd like to have a vote on it.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any communications or report from the chief executive officer?
Not tonight, sir, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
I'd like to call the order of the Housing Authority for West Valley City. Now that we've had an opening ceremony and a roll call and all is present, do we have any discussion or motion on the minutes of December 3rd?
Motion to approve a minute on December 3rd, 2013.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call for, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any communications or report?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. And motion to adjourn?
Before you do that, you probably ought to rule or state what the vote was, since it was a voice vote. Could it be unanimous?
Thank you. So, an unanimous vote of yes on our minutes? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you.
The motion passes.
Motion passes, and we will adjourn.
Call to order, municipal building authority, opening ceremony, early we had today, roll call, all, everyone is here. We have approval of minutes on December 3rd, 2013. Does anyone want to make a motion about this one?
I move that we approve the minutes of December 3rd.
We have a motion? We need a second?
Second.
Now, go back to the motion maker, Councilor Norfeld.
I'll wave the summary.
Okay. All of you favorite in this approval of minutes on December 3rd, 2013, please say aye.
Aye.
So, motion passed unanimously. Number five, communication, and number six, any communication, Mr. Pyle?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Report of chief executive officer?
Also, no report, sir.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, public hearings, the fiscal year 2013 and 2014 budgets, which is resolution number 14-10, Mr. Pyle, please?
Thank you, sir. In a like manner, as we did in the regular city council meeting, we have a budget opening for the building authority this evening. For this particular budget opening, there's only one item, that's an $84,000 rollover for funds for the fitness center, and which will be used for repairs within that building.
Thank you. Now, I open the public hearing, the fiscal year 2013 and 2014 budgets, which is resolution number 14-101. Anyone wants to come up and speak about this application? None? Now, I close the fiscal year 2013 and 2014 budgets, which is resolution number 14-01. And I go back to, are there, say they want any, make a motion, discussion, or action?
Mr. Chair, I would like to move that we approve resolution 14-01.
Thank you, we have the motion, now I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, have motion and second, now go back to the motion maker.
Wave the summary.
Good, thank you. Of your favorite on this resolution number 14-01, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. And we need the motion for adjourn.
So moved. Second?
Thank you, go back to Councilman Rushton? No, I need to...
Point of order, a motion to adjourn is not debatable nor discussed.
Okay. Okay, now adjourn. Oh, motion passed misssly, and we are adjourned, thank you.
Just a general comment, thank you for working with me and helping me get through my first meeting. I appreciate all of you in doing that, and I'll get better as I go along.